Okay, at this time would everyone please stand by. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the record meeting of the Gates Parkers for March 18th, 2019, to order. This being a night meeting, there is no minutes to approve. We do that first monthly meeting of the month. But are there any amendment adjustments? And I have a couple. Either new business, number 10, E.A.M.S., would like to give a presentation. And number 11, to discuss a meeting with Musa Cartwright, who is P.O.G.A.S. Is there any, all adjustments to the agenda? If not, you will have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted.
So moved, Madam Chairman?
Second.
Our motion's been made and promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, is anyone signed up for? You have got a night's delegation, but on nights.
I'm just waiting to talk to my ass. No, I'm not doing an announcement.
She said.
What I'm saying is you're not signed up. I'm obscured as well.
Assistant.
Okay, well, I think she had said she had something she wanted to.
She has something else.
Right. Oh, okay, well, I can do it.
Come on, Mallory.
Maybe I'm the one who misunderstood. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. I'm Val, I'm here with Gates Partners for help and New Home Missionary Baptist Church. I'm not here tonight as far as official Gates Partners, just to set up announcements. And you will be receiving a letter for the budget year requested for the 2019 and 2020 year. And I have given everybody a copy of the Let's Talk Colon Cancer with a Dot announcement. That's gonna be Wednesday, March 20th at 11:30 at New Home Missionary Baptist Church. And this is an event sponsored by Vada in Jawan Hospital, Vada in Bringle, and Gates Partners for help. So we do ask you to please, if you came, come out to the luncheon. You'll get a luncheon with our educational materials and you'll get a booty bag. And one thing we're gonna have on site is a blow-up code where you can actually walk through it and you can see where the polyps start to form. It sounds bad, but it's very nice. It's a big process. You'll get a chance to do that if you come out. The other thing is Senior Fest 2019, it's a senior adult event on Tuesday, March the And you have a copy of that information if you desire to attend. It is a $15 registration and there's a contact information for if you'd like to go. And the last thing, this is National Total Retaliate Cancer Month, so you have a copy of just, pretty much just a little information tidbits on the prevention of colon cancer. So that's just for your information. And that's all I have for now. And I look forward to the budget when we improve it in May, June.
My question is, do you get to walk through the colon with a full lunch or half lunch?
Well, you can do both. It's not bad. I mean, it's really not, it's not bad.
It's already pretty set up.
It'll be a tough one, you see it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Val. Okay, we have no administrative reports because this is not the first meeting. There's no public hearing. First item under old business is fire fee discussion. I just wanted to bring you up to date that Billy Nguyen has submitted a survey to nine different counties, and they are within our area, to find out about funding and such. Others fund fire departments through a percentage of their tax. Two actually have a fire service tax district, and that is different than what we have. But if you would like this information, I can share this information with you. Since we have this now, we will be getting with the chiefs to discuss their needs. And it has also been brought to my attention, and I was asked to bring it to your attention tonight, that if you do increase the fees to the fire, and the amount of money therefore to each fire department, that that changes their grant match with certain grants. Right now, there are certain grants because of the amount of money they receive, they're only required to provide a 25 percent match. If you increase it, I was told $50,000 or $60,000, then they have to provide a 50 percent match to the same grant. So that's something that I've been asked to bring to your attention. So that is the update on that. And Billy Nguyen and I will be getting with fire chiefs in the next couple of, probably the next month or so, to discuss this with them so we can also work on contracts.
Just a clarification, that's still $20 a year, is that?
No, there's not $20. It's, that was what we were asked to look at, how much increase, if any, was needed. Thank you for that update, and y'all will be having meetings with fire chiefs and we'll, we'll know updates.
And there is a Nolan who's full-time, part-time. Because of pregnancy.
She's now a part-time employee, but this would be a full-time position.
So there's been some beyond our control situations with the medical league for one, and then the pregnancy of a Nolan. And so they're kind of shorthanded even though technically that's still on the roster.
They're still on the roster. But we also, you also have to take into consideration, two of those positions are SROs. They work at schools, they don't work the roads. But we pull them in to work the roads, and that creates comp time. That's another problem we face.
Okay, do I?
Sounds like a consideration that we give it. Make sure that, you know, we're taking the best action.
And yes, these two part-time positions were allotted to the sheriff's department, but had not been filled. So we'll just combine those two into one part-time.
One full-time.
One full-time, excuse me.
Madam Chair, a couple of questions, if I may, reading the dialogue for my notes, and Jim might have to answer this. Is there a current vehicle that's available?
Yes.
For that, okay. And it mentions there's one, one part-time position right now. Now, we have a bailiff now, is that, is that considered part-time? Is that available for the streets?
No, sir, he just works the courthouse. That takes a, bringing in the past and what we've had to go back to. We used to have Glenn Bunch here as a part-timer. Let me speak.
Want your face and voice on the?
Oh, you want me on camera? I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
To answer your question, Commissioner, we used to have Eric Wall and Glenn Bunch working courts. Eric was civil process, he worked daytime. Glenn Bunch was part-time, and he was retired, he was not obligated to another agency. Unfortunately, Eric gets out of all medical league, Glenn Bunch just all has to do, which we call back to active duty. So we were bringing our deputies back into the court room, creating more comp time. So we hired a retired Chesapeake police officer who lives in the county as a bailiff, and he helps us out on court days. So he is part-time.
So we got, so we're really taking more than one part-time?
Just, we got Lauren Kitts, who is a part-time deputy, but she's on admin because of pregnancy, and new vacant, that's it.
And I saw auxiliary, do we have any auxiliary officers right now?
We have two that we keep certifications for. Wendy, that's Wendy Casper, you know Wendy Casper, she is a, and Ed Witt. And Ed, he's working with another, but Commissioner Jeff asked about putting him back to work, and we are looking at that. If not, we're going to remove their certification from our department.
Thank you, Jim. Now, and we're, Madam Chair, you said we're taking the two part-time, making it one full-time, but reading the notes from county manager, there's still going to be a budget short, budget's still going to be short for the money that's allocated, is that right, a few thousand dollars?
No, that's not. If you, in the fourth paragraph of my memo to the first number board, once all the comp payouts were paid out, and current salaries, there was going to be twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars left in that budget, in the full-time. And in the part-time, there was still going to be a balance of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. That was not going to be expended because of the two vacant positions.
Okay, you're looking, you went from four to five, the last, the twenty-five, eight, fifteen, fifty-four.
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner, also, there was compensation, like I said, we spent almost a whole hour on this, in that meeting, and that's all we were allotted for our other meeting. And we talked about, you know, are there candidates, are there good candidates that are being interviewed by the sheriff's department? We were told that there were, and, and we wanted to be prepared not to miss out on a good candidate, one that already had the BLE training and all of that stuff, so we didn't have to go through those expenses, again, so, so. There were a lot of things, a lot of questions, and a lot of answers given on the topic. And we felt this was the best recommendation.
I'm, I'm all about, I mean, I've said it publicly for months now, public safety, and especially now that I realize that there's money allotted this fiscal year. Only thing that would bother me is if next, next fiscal year, where are we going to get X amount of dollars from to keep this position going? Would be my only concern. We, you know, looking, we're able to solve it this year till July.
But the money will not be put back into part-time. There will not be four part-time positions next year, there'll only be those two.
So this is a permanent change, okay, there's no going back, and, okay.
And of course, we did not know what the results of the medical issues will be, that slide might be vacant, but hopefully he can come back.
And I went to a drink writing class last Thursday night, so I've learned how to write drinks. Hopefully that'll help.
Get busy, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
You went last, you haven't got one yet?
No, I haven't.
Come on, get your best drink, too.
There's, there's a reason we brought you to the podium, we now have that on record.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, I'll vote. Concerning this, to approve the combining the two part-time into a one full-time position with sheriff's department. And this would be effective March the nineteenth, I believe, twenty nineteen.
So, vote.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion's been made, prompt for second. Any additional discussion? Okay, hear or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So you've got the green light. Okay, next, I'm sure I'll, when you get the book and solve the information about records retention, and it's such an interesting reading. Record pretensions and disposition schedule. Our clerk was so nice to give it to us to read. There were some changes in the administrative part, first, eight changes to rec. So, that's the pleasure of the board, administrative.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we adopt a general records schedule for local government agencies issued on March first, two thousand nineteen, from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. Period.
I would say. You don't want me to read it again, do you?
I don't want me to repeat it again.
Which motion is that?
Well, those are the, that was ninety-four pages, and it just, we have to maintain records, some we have to never, I mean, can never destroy, others are, you can keep them for five years, or ten years, or twenty years, and then you can destroy records. So it keeps us, tells us what to do with the records that we have. Is it, the motion's been made, it's second, any discussion? Commissioner Freeman, I know you stay up every night reading that.
I have no discussion whatsoever. You understood it all?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes approved. Okay, we have in here a series of demolition requests that was made from the inspector, and that I've written by, well, I knew it somewhere, and I've written by others that I did not know.
If I may?
Yes.
You are also included with your package of condemnation ordinance, which explains the process and how much time, all of these parcels have already been given. The parcels go back to two thousand and sixteen, and the property has not been cleaned up according to what our ordinance states. Sometimes they've had repeated letters sent, people have even been into the office to ask questions about what they needed to clean up the property. And as you can see, like you said, there are four pieces of property, money has not been set aside in the ordinance for this, in our budget ordinance. Anytime in the past that we've had property that the building inspector has brought before the board, the board has taken each property on a case-by-case basis, and then made a decision on if they wanted to put it out for bid for cleanup, and then move the money, or they have said they will allocate X amount, and how many houses can be cleaned, can be done under that amount. Right now, I'm recommending that if you do wish to have any of the properties cleaned, the money would be taken from fund balance. At this time, I do not know how much any of them would cost to remove. All of the properties we've had cleaned in the past cost anywhere between eight thousand and fourteen thousand dollars. So at least one of these, based upon the building inspector's opinion, should be less than eight thousand dollars because of how much of the houses remain.
Well, I, I know that the one on thirty-two, near, between Mr. Commissioner Jordan and I, it is, it's a pile of rubble, that should not require much, I mean, just get a excavator and load it up on a dump truck.
Well, one of my concerns is the fact that, if we did buy these, oh, the four or five, four properties, and I could give you three more in the county, that's, that I'm going to honor the deeds.
I could give you three.
Right. So, you know, what kind of priority system are we setting up, that are we setting ourselves up to say, well, we picked this one? But why would we not do it the other way?
That would be a question for the building inspector, because he is the one that keeps that file and makes that determination, and these are the four that he has brought before you tonight.
To touch on Hunter's comment, if I may, Commissioner Jordan, that, that stuck out to me also, one from, I'm going to look at the lap, the only info that was given to us, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, why were, why were these four chosen and, and not others? My, my recommendation, and county manager just said that, you know, it could be from eight to fourteen thousand dollars, that's thirty-two thousand dollars we've got to take out of the fund balance, and the money, the cost is going to be levied on the property. What's our collection rate going to be on that? What's our return going to be if we do levy it?
If I can answer that question, I know one year, we did two of the houses, one of them, as far as I know, the person still owns the property, and they've never paid that. The other one was immediately sold, and we would cook that cost.
And so, what I'm hearing from the commissioner down there, and one of my concerns is, not, not just priority, one property over another property as far as selection, but is this the right time for us to tie up thirty-two thousand, if we want to use that figure, the county's money, at this particular time? I, I, you know, and I know, Miss Hopper, you said, we're, we take one on its own, on situation, I think we're having, said, each one on its own circumstances. But, but I do remember, way back, I want to say, eight years ago, when we talked real extensive about the demolition policy, that the priority would come from phone calls, from citizens saying, the house that's me needs to be demolished, that that would be, that the building inspector wasn't going to go out and ride the roads and come back with a list of seventy, because we knew what it would do to the budget. But if he got the call from somebody, it didn't have to be a house beside you, you could live in Gatesville and have an issue with something in Sunday, and you could make a call to county manager with the building inspector, and that would require the building inspector to go out and see it, and now it's on record, there's a house that needs to be, if he agreed, that needed attention.
I, I concur with that, but the issue is that I, I'm personally familiar with houses that have been called in, and since then, several years, I don't think that's been done.
Older than two thousand sixteen?
Oh, yes. So, it would be interesting to find out what the, our housing inspector, you know, what is the, what type of system is he using? And how are we going to ensure the jurisprudence carried out as intended in a fair way?
I think, I think what Commissioner Jordan might be saying, if not, I'll, I'll say it for Jack, is that are there twenty-four that the building inspector has heard about, and now four have come forward? Is, is that the situation, or do we know?
I don't know. Well, I do, if I remember correctly, the one from September fifth of two seventeen, that was brought up in a meeting in two thousand seventeen. And it's someone who, at that time, who was employed by the county, said that they, I believe this, no, I'm sorry, that's not this property, that is another property, I believe that's on this list, that was supposed to be helping get some of the property cleaned up, and it's not been done. But the September seventeen letter, that has been brought before you before, and the decision was made to have someone who, I believe was at the meeting, go and talk to someone about this property, and nothing has been done.
Yeah, I recall that.
And this is, on that one, it says, this is the second, and finally notice was?
That's what it says, and all of them.
That's all. I think it would be a good idea to have the building inspector make, make no decision on this tonight, leave it table, have the building inspector come to us at the morning meeting next month, and, and basically go over the procedure for how these came about. Like Commissioner Jordan said, there's others out there from before this, what triggered these four, why are these four different than the other ones that have been discussed or brought up, or not brought up beforehand?
I would say that two of them are in pretty residential areas with homes on both sides, which could lead to infestation of mice and rats in there.
Or even termites.
Or whatever. That they're in close proximity, you know?
And, and the one on, on the twenty-third of two thousand eight, that one, I'm aware he has had numerous complaints on, that's the last one.
What was the day he had that?
August twenty-third of two thousand eighteen, I think I said two thousand eight. I do know that he has had numerous complaints on that one.
Okay. And that might be what's prompting, all of them.
Right.
And now, they're all in two thousand eighteen, it would make more sense, but that's the, that's the most current one that, that's the other four.
Right.
I'd hate to see us have a system, whereas, the only way you're going to get action is to continue the call. If you're going to call any complaint, there should only be one complaint. The procedure should go in place.
And whatever the steps are.
Exactly, yeah.
You have to do everybody the same.
About times, and the one that comes before, anyways, there's no action.
I, I agree with what Commissioner said, with the caveat that the budget has to be able to handle it. You know what I'm saying?
Well, of course, we don't know what the costs were, because in the past, it was taken down the highs from the top and the bottom. I know at least two of these are already a pile of rubble, so that should not cause eight highs of health. But I would think we have to go by what the ordinance says, too. If you read the ordinance concerning that, I'm sure that the building inspector is following the instructions in the ordinance.
But there's a long time, there's a long wait after the process is over, reading the ordinance, it's not cut and dry where, you know, we're sixty days out, we're three years out on one of them.
Yeah.
And he's aware of that, and we talked about that, but he also knew that because of one of them, the person who was supposed to be helping them, encouraging them to clean up, has not done what they've said they were going to do either. And he told me that was one reason he didn't send at least one of these.
Natalie, would you, would you think it'd be a good recommendation that at the next meeting, the?
I can ask.
Building inspector come, just give us some FYI stuff.
I think that's a good idea.
And maybe I'll list how many there are.
But I mean, of course, are you talking about how many complaints he's had on houses?
I don't know how many.
So I think the procedure.
If it's a justice statute.
If the complaint is what triggers it, then yeah, I want to know how many complaints, what are called, recorded, documented, and the date.
And then you just get into the comments that were just said, you know, so-and-so said that we're working on it, but there's no action. Well, the next person doesn't say anything, we treat you different than we treated the other citizen. You get into a whole, you know, you need to treat all citizens the same, how long are you going to give that person to, to rectify the situation?
And you've got to start somewhere.
Right.
So, and have to consist with their party. Okay, so you're going to ask the inspector to come to our meeting in April. Okay, number ten is EMS, and we have Stormy Butts with us tonight to give a presentation. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, please, grab me. I've had the pleasure of meeting with four of the five of you already on this exact same presentation, so in the interest of time, I didn't, I'm going all the way back through it unless you want me to. I'm going to hit some of the, the highlights and, and move towards the, my recommendation. The big thing is, is that based off of my staff, my staffing right now, I'm going, we're going to have about a three hundred thousand dollar shortfall in between, between what is appropriated for my department and what we're actually going to spend on staff in this budget year that we're currently working in. As I pointed out when I met with you all, we don't, we don't have an emergency plan. Right now, my appropriation supports one truck twenty-four hours a day, so I don't have a plan for, for any type of emergencies that should happen. I'm increasing the fatigue on my staff. A good, classic example is this past weekend, we went, from the time I met with you, Madam Chair, till, till today, we've gone five different occasions, at least two or three calls deep, and that one truck is left to handle all of those calls, and it takes all night long to do it, and that means that, that that staff is up all night long handling those calls. What I mean by no emergency plan, if, if something happens to one, one of my trucks while it's out of the county, there's not another truck here or, or staff to step up and man another truck. If something were to happen and cause a, a truck to be tied up out of the county somewhere for a duration of time, kind of like the deputies that you talked about earlier, if they get sent off somewhere that we didn't expect, there's not a plan to back those people up. Some growing issues among, among the state, on all EMSs across the state of North Carolina is, is there's been a lot of rule changes that is driving up the cost of EMS. All new ambulances after January two thousand eighteen have to have loading or securing equipment in them, that drives, that automatically makes the, the price of a new ambulance go up by thirty thousand dollars roughly, to add those things. We're right now in the middle of a rule change that will require paramedics starting January twenty twenty-three to have a degree in order to be a credential paramedic in North Carolina. That's going to be something that's going to drive up staffing immensely, it's going to start to cost more money to hire those people or to keep, retain people in those positions. So whenever I came to you all, I came off, I came to you and said pretty much the same thing, that, that if we don't start to make a plan right now today, this is going to hit us in the face two or three years down the road. Going back to that three hundred thousand dollar shortfall in my budget this, this year, that money has to come from somewhere, so right now, it's coming from fee for service, the money that we collect for the services that we provide from the insurance company. That's money that was budgeted by my board to be in the capital improvement account so that we could buy ambulances in the future, buy cardiac monitors and equipment that we need down the road, and right now, that, that capital improvement fund doesn't exist because we're spending that money to staff ambulances. So if you go all the way to the end of the presentation there that's in front of you, last couple of pages, there's a funding history that shows you what funding has been like through budget years from two thousand and three all the way up to the current budget year that we're in, and what our budget request would look like next year, or going into the next year. My budget request is going to end up being a, a minimum of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that would just be a Band-Aid to, to get me two or three more years down the road. And I know that that's not a budget request that the county manager's going to be able to, to meet without your guys' help or your involvement, because there's just not a hundred and thirty thousand dollars sitting around loose in the general fund. This, that's similar to what happened to us last year, in this budget year that we're in, we presented a hundred and seventy thousand increase, and we got fifty-six thousand, taking our current appropriation to four hundred and ten thousand. So that brings me to my recommendation, there's a general statute, one fifty-three A, Dax three oh one, North Carolina, that allows for the creation of service districts to fund programs such as rescue and ambulance services. And it would be my recommendation that, that you all take a look at, at using that statute to create a service district for the county of Gates, and then a service district for the municipality of Gatesville, because the two can't be mixed together, the municipality has to be under its own, and some of those, some of the same meetings have to happen in front of their, their governing body, to develop those two service districts, and then be able to assess a tax or a fee on that service district to fund EMS into the future. The very last page that's paperclipped to it was a fee model vet. After some conversation with the county manager over the last week, I don't think it works. I left it there so that you can see numbers, but if, that was on a fixed rate or fixed fee per parcel in the county, and I, and now that we've looked at the statute again, I don't think that it can be a fee, I think it has to be a tax based on the, on a penny for a hundred, or however you assess the tax to, to come up with the amount of money that you need to fund the department. So I left it there so that you could see some, some quick math, but it's not exactly right as far. It's my belief, I haven't been able to find anybody, but I think that's what forced the fire tax or the fire fee to state legislation. I can't remember, but it seems like back then, that, that calling it a fee is what took it out of this general statute and forced it to go to the state legislature, and, and I don't want that to happen in, in this particular situation, because time's not on our side.
Okay, I think all of us probably have some comments.
Oh.
We'll come up.
Just, just a couple of questions, Stormy. Ambulance is on the road right now, staff, one right now at the rescue squad. If someone has a medical emergency right now and has to go to North Coho, Oceana, and one of us leaving, getting a car wreck, how does rescue squad currently respond, who responds?
So, right, right from the get-go, when we got the $410,000 appropriation, or it was 353 originally, the board automatically started spending some of the money from our fee for service to staff a one extra person, and at the time, back then, six years ago, there were still some volunteers around it. The hope was that one extra person, and we could hopefully get one other volunteer and, and could put another truck immediately on the road. Today, I don't, I don't have any active volunteers that I can count on to do that, so.
So you're, you're saying if we get in a wreck on the way home, then
It's going to be a delay for a response.
There's going to be a delay for a response.
Yes, sir.
What type of, and I'm sure when you met with each commissioner, some of these same questions came up. And we talked, when you and I met, I know we, we talked about mutual aid, I think we talked about mutual aid too. So let's take that scenario that Commissioner just, just gave. Delayed, the delayed response to that second call that, that came in. Do you know at what point the mutual aid would be alerted, hey, we're going to need you, or is that right away? For the second accident call?
Right now, the unwritten rule is, is 15 minutes between the, between notification and when we start to reach out to mutual aid, so, so they're going to set off the pagers like they're all traditional, we used to hear in one or two times along with sending out a text message. If they don't get anything at all in that initial 15-minute period, then, then they'll start to consider reaching out to mutual aid. The problem in an EMS setting is, is our, our location isn't, if the wreck is in Corpi, that mutual aid is coming from Wayville across those back roads, so you're talking about a 20, at least a 20-minute response time, not to mention that barrier, that invisible wall that divides us between Virginia and North Carolina, sometimes throws a wrench in the middle of, of that. Another thing is, is all of the departments around us are, are scalloped, they're staffed as tightly as they can staff now, so they've got to take into consideration, what are they doing? Are they in quarters? Are they covered, or are they really now backing up in Wayville? Say the downtown truck is gone, that Wayville truck is now covering the south part of Suffolk, so their district that they're supposed to be first due in just grew immensely, so they might not even give us that, that mutual aid truck.
If you had, if you had a mutual aid come from Linton to, just because you retired at the hospital with Oceana, whatever, are you going to get a bill for that service?
Not from when, we don't have an agreement with the Husky to bill, so, so they would bill it as fee for service. Proquament is the only county that we have an, an agreement that includes a bill, so Proquament would, would get the fee for service, they would bill the, the patient that they provided care to, and we would get a bill for a hundred dollar for, for them responding into our county, and that, that works both ways. If we go to Velveter, which we do quite frequently, we get the fee and we can bill the county a hundred dollars additional to the fee.
So a flat fee if you're there an hour or if you're there three hours, right?
What's the, the, not put you on the bottom line, I can add this, but collection rate on rides, percentages, give me clear what that is if you give.
Right around, right around 84% across the whole system, the, the variation becomes, what am I collecting? If I'm collecting Medicaid, right off the top, I'm losing 30% of, of fees. If it's blue cross and blue shield, you know, the, the fees are not balanced, different insurances pay different amounts of money, but we collect right around 8% across the board on all stuff that we build.
And, and that's, everything is done in-house right now, so it saves the county a lot of money, I would think, just playing with some figures of contracting with the county to do, to provide the services to our citizens. I mentioned it at the last meeting when Madam Chair, you mentioned, you know, budget lines and stuff, and, and I mentioned public safety, one of them, one of them is rescue squad. Our citizens deserve a lot, we can't give them everything, but when they call 911, they want to see Sheriff Campbell, one of his guys show up. If they're having a heart attack or stroke, they want to see a rescue squad come, hearing the sirens coming. That's one thing that we can't offer our citizens a lot in this current environment, that's something that every citizen hopefully never needs, but if they do need it, we need to have somebody there for them, and especially, like you said, volunteerism. I was curious what you're going to say, the current trend is, is going down. Fire departments said the same thing, and, you know, I, I have a scanner, and I've listened sometimes, and I'd hate to be the 911 dispatcher, I'd more hate to be the person at the other end of that phone, that made the phone call waiting on someone to come. Thank you, Stormy.
And just, just for comment wise, and make no mistake, we're required by general statute to provide that.
Yeah.
What is the status of trying to get the reimbursements from Medicare or Medicaid?
Medicaid costs here has been submitted the last two reporting periods, and it's sitting on a desk at the HHS.
Have any idea, I asked you that before.
I get, I get an answer every Monday that it's coming, it's coming, which is encouraging, but then I go to meetings with directors from across the state who talk about they're looking for money five and six years ago, so I don't know if you believe the guy that says it's coming, it's coming.
That's your knowledge, Stormy. What would you say the percentage is, that we are not responding sufficiently on the number of calls that we receive from? They said we get 30 calls from us. When you say one or two of those are insufficiently responded to, or are we sufficiently responded to them, all of them as a town, and we're just trying to have, you know, something that could happen if we, if we stay in front of those?
It's hard for me to put an exact percentage to the amount of calls that we're not responding to, but I would, I, over the weekend, I, I know that, starting on Friday night, at 5:00, we went four calls deep, and two of those we never, ever responded to. They called back several, multiple times, and prior to a truck ever arriving, they called and canceled. I'd say we, we probably drop a call like that at least two or three a week, and then call and call and call, and we're tied up on other calls, and we never get there because they, they call and cancel before the truck ever arrives.
So that is the reality. Okay?
And as we are looking at your plan, with this new regulations coming in in 2023, and one is 2018, well, which is next, what's already in?
Passed already.
Okay.
We haven't been affected by that one yet because we're, we're in a remount mode, so we haven't bought a new truck. If we buy a new ambulance that's newer than January 2018, we'll be affected by that. We haven't felt that yet because we're remounting boxes on new chassis right now.
But with 2023, say something a long time, but it's not, will you kind of have paramedics going to meet the educational requirements?
And just so you're aware, that has been brought up as well on county manager's list serves, there's counties who, they operate rescue squad and emergency management services, and the counties have already started saying what she buzzes, that it's going to make it more difficult to find paramedics, and it will increase your expenses as related to employing the people as well.
What about the upcoming training? Got an email, what's that in regards to?
There's a workshop on the 28th, I believe?
21st, 28th?
It's at the end of the month, so the state is doing five workshops throughout the state to their, their town hall meetings, I guess for lack of a better term, to give you, the public and EMS systems, the opportunity to voice their voice against the rule and ask questions and, and better understand it. They're using it as, as an opportunity to clean up the rule, because once, once the rule goes to the medical commission, they're, they don't have a lot of leeway to be able to make language changes, so they want to address any issues that are out there right now so that they've got the language right, so that when it goes to the commission, there'll be a time where it's available for public comment, but they, they don't, they don't allow a lot of leeway to, to change it.
Okay, when and where is the meeting?
It's the 28th, it's in that email that I sent.
I was going to say, do you, you sent us that email about it, the Pitt Community, I think?
It's at Pitt Community College, I want to say it's the 28th of this month.
Do you think it would be wise for a commissioner or someone representing the county to attend that?
I am attending, and if you have, if you have public comment, absolutely, it would be, I think it'll give you the opportunity to hear some systems that are even bigger than ours to, that are going to talk about it, they're without a doubt in their mind.
With the article that you gave us to read about in rural America, there are few people left to drive to the ambulance, it says, I mean, this is not just a North Carolina problem, it's a problem across the country.
And this education rule, something that I hadn't even thought about, and we didn't talk about in my presentations to you all, is the education rule is going to make that even worse, because volunteers have already complained about the 180 hours that they have to put in to get the certification. Now I have to go get a two-year degree, and I'm not going there. It'll, it'll close the volunteer EMS organization down.
It's the email you sent, March 28th, Pitt Community College meetings at 1:00 and 7:00.
And it's the same meeting, they're just, they're going one at 1:00 and then again at 7:00 PM for people that can't come during the day.
Well, I think maybe more of that, just, just one show, I think a lot of us need to show up.
Was it, did you say 21st?
28th.
21st, at 1:00 and 7:00.
Okay, certainly, you can, I, we can see that you can really talk about this and try to come up with some solutions for us, and, and certainly, you know, when you need help, you want somebody to show up. It could be one of us tonight that would need help, and we want somebody to show up, and citizens deserve that as well, so we'll see what we can find and do.
I think we need to study this at, in the next meeting, we've come back with something that's, the other problem.
Now, I would like for you to know that in the information in the blog that I sent you yesterday, and that you have before you, it does lay out parameters for public hearing. I left a message with Carol Lindsay of the School of Government, and not heard back from her, to clarify a few items. The town of Gatesville would have to either have its own separate district, or they can pass a resolution to be a part of our special district. I need to get a little clarification on that so I can share that with the mayor of Gatesville. But also, you have to be aware that if you do want to go this route, all the citizens, citizens will have to receive a notice through the mail four weeks prior to the public hearing, and it has to be advertised, of course, at least twice before the public hearing.
So the, the sense of urgency on my presentation tonight was to hopefully get a, a move towards a public hearing for your April meeting. If you wait until the March meeting, we'll be inside of that.
You can't have a public hearing until May.
Okay, so if we get inside of the next meeting, yeah, we're going to just continue pushing that public hearing forward.
And I think we discussed that in our, in our meeting, that there's a circle, there's hoops you got to go through, and that mailing out to everyone, you know, that takes time to know if we can get that.
Well, this would be the kind of thing, if this is possible, this would be the kind of thing that, that we would hold a special call meeting to have a hearing so there's nothing else on the agenda.
That would be a trigger log in.
I think that would be smart, if we did that, nothing else on the agenda, maybe on a Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday night, because we could have a, a lot of people that want to come and hear information or speak to that topic.
Because it must affect every household in the county.
And, and, and the citizens, if they're, if they're getting to be hit with something, they, they need fair warning, you know, and they'll speak their piece on it.
And it will also affect how the budget for this coming year will be looked upon, as I'm working on that. I will make you aware, I did speak with another county manager last week at the association meeting, they did not have a service district as we're looking into, they all operate with rescue squads, but they do have a few situations where the county pays a portion, and the town pays a portion so that they can have a paid person who is with the rescue squad, and there's one paid person in certain fire departments. And he even made the statement, it's not a matter of if this is coming about, but when, because they're facing the same issue in their county about what to do, because they are losing long-term as well.
Is it the town going to be still?
Captain, can you give us an estimate on what, what now is right now?
No, sir, I cannot. We, as we've said, we do not have, we do not have audit completed yet for this past year.
Do you have a ballpark?
I could use some 2017's audit, but I don't have that information with me right now, but I can
Sometimes we
kind of figure that out.
They have to use that, what now is, give them a couple of some things, instead of raising taxes, if we got $5 million in.
We did not have $5 million. I, I believe the other year it was $3 million, but that, if I remember correctly, included restricted funds as well.
All right. At least we got three.
It's better than two.
I would like, I would like to propose, not, not motion, but I would like to propose that we do, when we do have a hearing, that it be a standalone hearing, not tied to this meeting, if, if everybody will agree on that.
I think, yes, because sometimes our meetings can be long, and I would think that would be an item that would need to be thoroughly, give everyone the opportunity to speak and to force their opinion.
Now, logistics wise, Madam Chair, well, how do we, I think send out a document to every resident, do you add it to the water bill?
No, that's, that's not, everyone, there's a tax, there's a pad dress for the tax office, and that's what we would use because the tax, according to the school of government, it's not just on property, it's on real property.
The mailing alone, just, just for the sake, same, that mailing alone postage?
We don't know, Ms. Florence and I have discussed, we know there's bulk rates with the postal service, so we will check into that. Many years ago, previous job, I know how that worked, I do not know how that works now, so we are going to do some checking. Currently, right now, we still pay 50 cents, and even if you're looking at $4,000, and that was based upon, if you look at
Residential parcels.
This information, that's residential parcels, that's $4,662. Now, of course, there might still be, for example, we own two houses, so that would be two separate residential parcels, and there are others in the same situation.
Has to be delivered.
Right. And so that right there is quite a bit of money, just on that.
I mean, that would be I mean, that would be, and you do taxes in the parcels, that's 7,634.
Stormy. I have a public hearing. You can make a decision.
They have everybody sign up when they come in and put their social security number down.
And?
So we can have that social security number.
Tax money.
I think Stormy is asking for a public hearing.
The email from county manager, Stormy, is there already a map of the proposed district showing the boundaries?
The county?
The county.
I mean, okay, there's nothing, I'm just looking, the statement and the statement attesting, that's already been...
Those are things that I've laid between the two of us, we already have somewhere in documents that's not gonna take a lot of time because he's already addressed the needs.
Well, if you have any emotion, I'll make a motion that we would move forward to allow a public hearing on EMS requests to be considered for making crease, a date prior to our next meeting or a week or two next meeting.
I don't think we could have it prior to our next meeting because that is...
Yeah, two weeks.
You're looking at, you're looking at May.
The soonest you could have a public hearing would be the first meeting in May.
Because you've got to do the...
Because we still have to do the mailings, we still have to get it in the newspaper. So the soonest a public hearing could be held would be for the next, if you were doing it during the meeting time, I know you said not, but that would be May the first.
But even with just getting the mailing night and you have to have four weeks nervous right, I mean, and we're here, this is the...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Well, I make a motion that we have a public hearing as soon as possible, for your extension.
And of course, in April, we only have one meeting, so that would give us some more leeway of, like, time before the main meeting, but the main meeting is one of the budget stuff as well.
Not necessarily, ma'am. Last year, we did not vote on the budget till we had a second meeting in June to vote on the budget.
In some years, we've done it.
Correct. Typically, we do it in May, but this year, personally, I would like for you to take this up to make a decision because that will affect the budget.
Absolutely.
So Tom, Tom's of this.
Okay, Mr. Jordan has made a motion to proceed with a plan to have a public hearing to discuss EMS.
Special meeting.
A special meeting, not our regular meeting in April. Do I have a second?
Just now, Madam Chairman, I have a second.
Okay, motion has been made and properly seconded. Any additional discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Commissioner Jordan's statement was very broad that it be held. Looking at, from the school of government, would it not make more sense for the county manager and Chief Buck to get together before our meeting, which is in two weeks, come up with a couple of dates, present them to us at the April 3 meeting, saying these are our options? That gives the county manager and Ms. Lawrence time to have that stuff, look at logistics for mailing, and they can send it to the printers the next day. That way, the commissioners know the date, can look at our calendars that day. But if we don't go that route, how do we set a meeting date where we know all the commissioners can be here since we can't...
My assumption was that we would have the dates on the first, our meeting in April.
But that's not the motion that was made, you just said to have a meeting in April.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan, what was your motion?
He said earliest.
He said earliest possible.
Exactly, this phrase.
And you're always allowed to make per your stature.
Okay. So we, and who seconded? I misstated it. So we will do your motion at the earliest possible date.
Per your stature.
Okay. Any discussion?
So how do you determine that? How do we set up a meeting where all the commissioners can?
Well, she can email us and see if we can figure it out.
And I'm just assuming that we're talking about a night meeting, which would probably make us all...
I just think I just went to class last month and you can't handle, all this is supposed to be done in public. So like Commissioner Jordan just said, if she sends emails out, picking a date, is that against what the school of government thought me? I mean, I want to get it done, but we gotta be on the up and up.
I mean, what, go ahead, Mrs. Lawrence.
If I may, in the past, many situations have come up, the board can direct staff to proceed. We will figure out the estimated timeframe for the general statute based on what that determines. I'll hold the board with those dates, you won't be conducting business. I'll contact each of you, you'll decide, and then we follow the public meetings law without the method.
Well, we have done that in the past.
And there's no such thing as a robo-call substituted for, available or anything like that?
No.
Be nice, but no. And we don't have everybody's phone number.
But we will, of course, put it out on our website and in other locations besides the newspaper. As required, we will post it in all of our local locations as well.
Okay, a motion is currently on the floor, it's been properly seconded, if I was corrected. Is everyone prepared to vote? Okay, all those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose. Okay. So we'll move it forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, the last item under new business was a meeting with Mr. Cartwright of Piedmont Gas. He's available on the 20th of May, but before he comes, he wants to know, what do we want to know from him? This was like concerning economic development, if you remember. So what are the parameters that you are interested in him discussing with the board?
I think one for me would be, do they have any projected areas that might, that they might be targeting?
To what, to in large?
Yeah, to, on their own, in other words, do they have, if they were moving on their own, where, which area would they be going into? And I'm sure development's gonna sort of trigger that, but they may have a five or 10-year, or even a 20-year plan. I'd like to know if they have such a thing and what is it mapped? Maybe a map to show us that rather than him just come tell us if it exists. Is there any dollars out there, North Carolina or federal, that they can make us wear that we might not have heard about would be an area?
And when you say dollars, for to add to existing?
To grant, grand dollars or money to assist us, we can't afford to do piping on such a, such a road, but there might be something out there. What does the future look like, you know, that kind of thing?
And what is the criteria they use to, whatever, to enlarge or to...
Yeah, how many houses per mile, customers per mile. I think they go by, you know, because they never know if anyone signed up, so they go by on houses per mile, I think.
And in addition, Madam Chairman, to what they have provided DOT with their pipeline projections, and they have provided DOT things according to that always.
And they painted the road here in Gatesville, have you heard anything about Natalie Mount? The major line that runs about the cemetery, across the road, goes through the Lewis Family Partnership, through the field there, and it goes across under the creek. And they painted on the road through the woods, it went through the woods and painted where the line is in the last two weeks, getting ready to do something.
I think another area would be to have them to discuss how the residents would save on cost, to have a delivered gas, and they have to use cow versus buy gas.
They'll knock the gas instead of...
Yes. What kind of savings would you expect?
Or business would, if they had it available, what savings they could.
And that kind of leads up to a question, if I recall, in some discussion we had, is how many customers it would take for them to run a line to... Recall it coming up?
Customers need to land...
They would have to tax that pipe for 20 customers or 10 or whatever.
I don't recall the actual number, but when they came and spoke to us one time before, they told us what their return per mile needed to be to justify them doing it. So that'd be something more, he could probably tell us they have a rough to cut, I don't remember what it was, it's been a long time.
Have you been trying to name this one? Number of topics, number of things that we're interested in. Anyone else have anything else? Okay. And so we would direct the county manager to forward this information out to Mr. Cartwright. Okay? I don't believe that requires a motion.
And we probably will put that person up early in the intensive...
No, that was the request for the Economic Development Commission meeting at 6:00.
Okay, okay, got you.
It's not the correct... Okay, I believe that's the last of the new business. Citizens comments. Don't let anybody watch you the podiums. Okay, commissioners' comments. Mr. Jordan, do you feel like you're taking a comment?
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here. I have been in the presentation tonight.
They're paying though, I'm sure they're paying.
I think we've had some pretty good discussion, but hopefully we can accomplish some things that we are not to do, just because of the citizens.
Okay.
It'll be nice.
Thank you. Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too like to, on each occasion, thank our citizens for giving us the call, giving us a heads up on various issues, as well as department heads and others that are bringing budgetary things in front of us. Most especially, I want to thank our management team, particularly our current two boards, for providing this material for us to read, even as boring as it is, please, that we do get it in a timely manner and give us an opportunity to look over it as a board. So thank you.
And she has another 100 pages of retention records. Commissioner Jordan?
I like that, Commissioner Freeman's comment, what's the retention record on the 94 pages we got? How long do we have to keep that? Thank you to the citizens for coming. County manager, the admin looks good, nice, he's done pressure washing. Like to say something nice when there's something nice to be said. As a commissioner, a lot of hard decisions that we have to make, especially monetary. Lot of people and places, departments own money, but there's only so much to go around and it's hard. I say it every meeting, I want us to be proactive and not reactive. I want to make sure all the decisions that we're making, as you can see a while ago, were transparent and make sure it's important that all the citizens are informed of what's going on. Hope everyone has a safe night and hope I didn't jinx us, Stormy, with the comments about leaving somebody after me. Thank y'all.
Which one?
Well, I think maybe all these people that are wanting money, getting Natalie to get them all together, let them arm wrestle for their funds, I think the sheriff might be up.
He just started smiling big time, Jack.
I know that.
Hey, he's looking right, he says, I can take them.
Boy, we got a lot of budget stuff coming up and a lot of worthy, a lot of worthy requests. And heard Commissioner down here, Commissioner Freeman say, you know, general statute mandates that we provide services for citizens of Gates County. So it's something that we want to do, something we have to do, we just have to figure a way to make it work out. It is good to hear planning for the future from the departments, the same people that are asking for money are showing us future situations that could occur, that actually may occur. But I appreciate their effort in helping us plan for the future. We're working together when we do that. So thank you, departments, for doing your homework, because we have some good, we've had some good documentation, especially most recently, and that'll help us go into the budget. And Miss Hopler's going to find a magic rainbow or something, somewhere between now and budget time. Thanks for coming tonight.
I also want to thank you for coming. We have some tough decisions in the next month, as you can see, and as my colleagues have referred to, there's a lot of things that need assistance and money. We don't have an unlimited supply, that's a problem. And we have the, I've been these slices of pie. And so it's going to take us all working together and being creative and see what we can come up with. We all want to earn our money in the next few weeks and months. And certainly, we want the best black citizens, we are citizens. Tonight, we don't know what we'll face when we go home. We might need to call the rescue squad, we might need to call the sheriff, there might be a break-in or whatever, and we want them by our community call. And, you know, we live here in the county too, and we want those services as well. You know, I think it's nice that we have the discussion and that we can discuss things and try to come in with discussion and listen to all people's opinions. We can come up with the best solution possible. And thank you for our staff, they've given us a heads up on what the future holds, we need to start planning. 2023 says, says like a fog time, but it's not that far. And we thank Mrs. Lane here, she's trying to collect all the taxes she can possibly can and continue to do that. As you can see, we have, we need money to do. But anyway, and let's not forget that Mrs. Riddick concerning the colon cancer, I mean colonosomies, and all trying to keep us healthy, so that we don't need to call the rescue squad. So, but anyway, listen, you have a nice night, have a safe travel home, look back to your neighbors and your friends down the road, and we'll be back in business the first Wednesday in April, and tell your friends to come. Thank you for coming, and at this time, I'll have, I'm saying a motion to adjourn.
So move, say.
Okay, a motion's been made, properly seconded, all of those, the favors say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.